Nirmam, modala madhigaram, 21 vasana vasana.
Romans chapter 1 verse 21. Roma matratia mirvekotta vaakimma.
Avargal devanay arendum, avare devanindu mai meppadutamalum, stotthriyamalum irundhu, thangal sundanegali naale veenar aanargal, unarvillada orulde irudheyum iruladendhade.
Here, orugutam janangalai kuritha daana, vilagheen vartheegalange cholla potrakaradu.
Here, the fallen words of this group of people have been mentioned. Okkumpu janlan gurchna padipoyina maatalikadu chappabadiyunavili.
Avargal devanay arendhavarkal.
They were people who are known God. Or devanirgiinavaru.
Ananal, avare magimeppadutavellai, avare stotthriyavellai.
But they glorified him not as God, neither were thankful. Mahimuparchalaidu devan kisthutulaarpinchalaidu.
In the avikuriya valkaila, devanay thudippadu enbadu mikamukkiyamana oru pakdi.
The spiritual life is an important aspect of praising God. Aatpee jeevitham devanisthutinchitanaadi, mikilukkumukkiyamana bhagamo.
Namie evalu stotthrikrav, evalu aanthavare mai meppadututhukavam, enbadu kanakil vakkipadukarav.
How much you are praising God, how much you are glorifying God, everything will be kept in account. Entega sthutinchuchinam, entega devan mai mepparchinamani, lekkal onchabaduchinadi.
Namie evalavaay devanay mai meppadututhukavamo, avalavaaga namakupiriyakariyengalay devan cheekaradu.
To the extent we glorify God, to that extent he does great things to us. Entega devan mai mepparchinam, antega devu gappakariyaman cheechinam.
Devan namie neer padithinar?
Why God has made us? Devu indukkum neer parcheno?
Yes, I, 43, 21.
I say chapter 43 verse 21. Esya nalavamudha devamirvekotta vaakimma.
Indha janathay enakhande neer padithneen, ivargal en thudiyae solivarevargal.
Aanthavurudhi thudiyae chulli orumudiyaga, namelaray neer paduthaapattavarkal.
We all have been formed to show forth the praise of the Lord. Devanay kasthutini pracharamuchetukam neer parchabanna varamo.
Devanay stotthrippadu, enbadu namudiyekkaadamai.
Praising God is a duty. Devanisthutinchitamanika kartaviyamgaavunadi.
Namadhi appudhi cheedurukram enrdu, thiriyadu.
We do not know how we have done it. Manam eelaakuchesiyunamutheliyadu.
Ananal, yappudhus stotthram cheyavendu, nammeel vildan, oru uliyam.
But it's a duty, that is a ministry that has fallen upon us, that we have to praise God always. Yellapurustothram chaitam maniyakkakartaviyamagana, mankavudunamavandhi.
Kair 5, 18.
When we see first Thessalonians chapter 5 verse 18. Madhur Thessaloniki 5 adhyam bachimtha vaakimma.
Yellahutleeyum stotthram seyungal, appadisayvede, kristhi esukal ungalai kurithu devanade stuttama irukkada.
Yappudhus stotthram seyavadu, devanode sittam.
Praising God, giving thanks to God always is the will of God. Yellapurustothram chaita devanay chittamma yunnadi.
Ivagallarunna nam vilangikuluvadi enna?
From these, what do we understand? Veethundiyam granchuchinam.
Oru devanade pilla yappudhus stotthramanikonda irukkado.
A child of God should always give thanks to God. Yellapurustothram cheyvalenno.
Devanay stotthrika da, stotthrika stotthrika, kirubai perukul.
As we keep on praising God, grace will abound. Stotthram cheechunduka krupa vishterilichunduno.
Anegarude stotthrathinaale, kirubai perugurathenrdu vedathaleena parkurav.
Read in the word of God, grace abounds with the thanksgiving of many. Anekuliyaka kruthugundashthutilavala krupa vishterilichundadi.
Stotthram vannodhu enbadu, adurukkaadan.
Giving thanks is a duty. Stotthram chaitavaka pugavunadi.
2nd Thessalonians kair modala madhigaram, 3 vasana.
2nd Thessalonians chapter 1 verse 3. 2nd Thessalonians madhutradhyam muddavakimma.
Sahudharere, naan yappudhu ungalai kaha devanay stotthrike kattanalligala irukkadu.
Adurukkaadan.
That is a bond. Adurukka pugavunadi.
Aba devanay thudippadu, eyertvodu, magimeppaduthodu, avarudhi thudiyae solivarumudiyaga, namelarum neer paduthaapattavarkal.
To exalt God, magnify God, glorify God, to show forth his praise, all of whom have been appointed. Devanisthutinchitakum, mai mepparchitakum, manam andramu neer parchabanna varamo.
Philippiar 4 madhigaram thale parkumbadu.
When we see in Philippines chapter 4. Philippine 4 adhyam chuchinapudu.
6 vasana.
Verse 6. 6 vaakimma.
Ningal ondukum kavali padamal, ellavachigurithu, ungal vinnapanglay, stotthrathode kudiyajabathinaalam, vaidhalinnaalam devanukuthereppaduthungal.
Yellavatilani stotthram cheyadu, aanthavurukada thireppaduthida podumanaadu.
In everything we have to give thanks to God, it would be sufficient if we make no debt to God. Annee tiki stotthram chesidu devanke thileesinathu thidachalino.
Aba oru naaliki nam evalu nera stotthram pandro.
Then for how long a day do we praise God? Okkadhirumnu keni intasye parsham chesinam.
364 days this year.
4vandralaavaidham, 4vadhamul dhatiyunam.
Aba iba namakulla yevalu stotthramanirpo.
How much you would have praised God? Manam entega stotthram chesiyunam.
Avargal devanay arendum.
Though they knew God. Or devanirgiyu.
Magimeppadutamalum irundhu.
They glorified him not as God. Mahimunu chellinchukundavundi.
Stotthriyamalum irundhu.
Neither were thankful. Stotthram cheekundavundi.
Avargal sindhilay veenar aanargal.
Became veen in their imaginations. Variyakkavritiyamila verthulai irai.
Unarvillada orudhey irudheyum iruladendhade.
The foolish heart without understanding was darkened. Variyakkavivikavritiyam andhakaram ayenno.
Vedam enna sollukaradu.
What is the Bible saying? Vaakimayemun chappuchinadi.
Stotthra baliyadigavan ennay mai meppaduthukran.
He who offered praise glorified me. Stutiyagamarpinchavodunna mai mepparchichunadu.
50 song 23 vasana.
Psalm 50 verse 23. Yavayakketanay muddavakimma.
Stotthra baliyadigavan ennay mai meppaduthukran.
Aba idhalan enna vilangikulukarav?
From this, what do we understand? Veethundiyam thelskunuchinam.
Stotthram enbadu mikamukkiyamanaadu.
Praising is very important. Stotthramanadi atyavasramagavunadi.
61 song 30 vasana thale parkumbadu.
When we see Psalm 59 verse 30. 69 kirtthram 30 vaakimma.
Devanade naamate partynal thudithu, avare stotthrathinal mai meppaduthuvay.
Ibu idhalan nam vilangikaradu, enna devanay mai meppaduthukaradu, thudikkaradu enbadu, nammeel vildan oru kaadamai.
From this, we understand glorifying, giving thanks to God is a duty that has fallen upon us. Devan mai mepparchitathsthutinchitamanika kartaviyamagavunadi.
Ananal nam adhiyavu endhavathathle seluthukuravani enakuthiriyala.
But we do not know how we are offering that. Manam eelaakuchesinchunamutheliyadu.
Idhi Osea 14, 2 lapparkumbadu.
When we see this in Hosea chapter 14 verse 2. Hosea 14 adhyam 2 vaakimma.
Vartegalikundu katradathuthirummungal, avare noke devaree illa akramateem neeke, engleidaiyavai angi keritharulum, appadudhanangal, engel udadugalin kaalagale seluthuvom.
Stotthram enbadu oru kaalay.
Praising is a cough. Stotthramanavaka edlugavunadi.
Udadugalin kaalay.
It's a cough of a lips. Pedavalaina edla yunnavi.
Innaradhatelarka udadugalin kaniyage stotthribali.
In other ways, we read an offering of praise that is the fruit of a lips. Inkakusthalamal chodunchinam jifokvalamana sthuttiyagamo.
Aba ivagallarunna nam enna vilangikulukro.
From this, what do we understand? Veethundiyam thelskunuchinam.
Nam devanay stotthrikyave sistiyakapattavarkal.
We have been created to praise God. Devanisthutinchitakum neer sistiyabanna varamo.
Ebreer 13, 15.
Hebrews chapter 13 verse 15. Hebrews 13 verse 15.
Aahayal, avarude naamate thudikkum, udadugalin kaniyage stotthribaliye, avermula may epoodum devanukutha seluthakadavam.
Na edukidu sollitu varan.
Why am I telling this? Indukkudin chappuchinam.
Sinu ungalakalarka thiriyon.
All of you know about this. Ne andarki thileenu.
Ananal, idhu seluthadu naale, oru uliyakaranukke, oru viswasiyekinadakkaradana, kerdu enna?
What is?
Adai pashtiripalana, first parta parkuvaro.
What is the worst thing that will happen to a worker or a believer if he doesn't offer praise? Stotthram cheekupadu, evaku sevakunki viswaski, en haani kaluganani sujdekarana madhribagamka chuchinavu.
Avargal stotthriyamalum mai meppadutamalum irundhu, sindhilay veenar aanargal.
They glorified him, neither were thankful, they became veen in their imaginations. Var stotthrinchukundamai mepparchukundavundi, thamika talampuliyandhivertinavu.
Ningal devanay thudikkamay irukala, ananal, ningal sindhilay veenarai marviragal.
You may refrain from praising God, but you will have vain imaginations. Devanisthutinchukundavundavachinam, meka talampulay manchilavertilakam aruduru.
Ningal devanay thudikkamalirukala, ananal, ungal irudheyum iruladenchu poikadakum.
You may stop from praising God, but your heart will be darkened. Devanisthutinchukundavundavachinam, meka vritiyam andhakaramaguna.
Idhi ellavache kattilam.
More than all these. Ne anniti kantepayga?
Idh devanay thudiyamalirukkaradu naale, 3 kariyengalukke devam, oru manidhanay opukudukaradu.
By not praising God, God gives a man to three things. Devanisthutinchukundavundavala manishunidh devu 3 kariyamla kapakichuchinadu.
Ibu ningal devanay stotthram maningala, eetcha vidathla mai meppadithingala, appudigaradu, ipponinga kandhibidigala.
Now you can find whether you have praised God, you have given thanks to him in the way that is meet for you. Sarigasthutinchidh devanay mai mepparchinavani, prumirikanugavachinu.
Devanay thudikkalenna, 3 kariyadukke devame opukudukaradu.
If you don't praise God, God himself gives us three things. Devanisthutinchukupadu, 3 kariyamla kududumanaapakichuchinadu.
1.
One. Akati.
Roman, modala madhigaram, 24 vasana.
Romans chapter 1 verse 24. Roma matratia mirvekotta vaakimma.
Idinivittum avargal, thangal irudhayathrule ichyelinaale, oruvarodaruvu, thangal sariranglay avamana paduthathakadaga, devanavargalay asutthathirku opukadutha.
Ibu devanay thudikkalay, mai meppadutala, anadjabanarathla katara eyertala, illa kaalayelilambi katara mai meppadutala, eravala padukumbodhu devanay thudikkalay, illa nairangidakumodhu katara thudikkiranthu uliyathen ningal vidditingen chonna, devan ungalay enesirare, asutthathirku opukudukran.
If you leave of praising God, glorifying God in the morning and refrain from giving thanks to him in the evening, and stop doing the ministry of praising God always, the Lord gives you up to uncleanness. Devanisthutinchukundamai mepparchukunda, udhyamana raathre kuda devanisthutinchukunda, deshthutinchusevacheyukundavunathleite, devu mananapputhrathakapakichunu.
2.
Secondly.
26.
26 vaakimma.
Idinivittum devanavargalay ilivana ichyirohangelukke opukadutha.
Idhi 2vadukkariyam.
This is the second thing. Idhi 2vadukkariyam.
2vadu, elivana ichyiroham.
Secondly, vile affections. 2vaduka thuchumayn abilashalu.
Yedanala oru viswasi, oru uliyakara, elivana ichyiroham, idhupattavallemela thakappadra, en asutthathukulavam maatti kolra, naladana irunda, apdilana ningal nanikala.
You may think why a believer or a worker is being affected by vile diseases, you may think you was good. Kasavakal viswasa chala bhagunar, gani, entukvar thuchumayn abilashalukka apputrathakapakichupadunnavan, meenakunavachinu.
Ningal thudiyamalirukumbodhu, automatica idhupattavallemegal ungalavendu aalukeseya arabhithu vudukaradu, devanum adharku opukudukaradu.
When you refrain from praising God, automatically these powers come to reign over you, God also offers you to those things.
28.
Verse 28. Mirveyamda vaakimma.
Devanay areyum arvay, patthikondrukka avarulukka manadillamandhrida bedial, thahadavigale seyimbadi, devanavargalay keedaana sindhaike opukadutha.
3vadu, keedaana sindhai.
Thirdly, a reprobate mind. Muddavaduka brasthamanasu.
Ningal devanay thudikkadu naale, indha varisathle, idhupattapadilani ningal iluthukollapattiripirigal.
Just because you do not praise God, you would have been pulled to these kind of paths this year. Devanisthutinchukundavundavala, sauncham latevante markamla velichu undavachinu.
1, asuttham.
One uncleanness. Akati appavithrata.
2vadu, elivana ichyiroham.
Two vile affections. 2vaduka thuchumayn abilashalu.
3vadu, keedaana sindhai.
Thirdly, reprobate mind. Muddavaduka brasthamaynamasu.
Idhu vandu, enna idhu vandricha, namasindhasariyalaupodha, pakkaradhalan tapapakramay, enngaradhalan tapavaradu, namaventadhalan chenchikutradramay, namukpudupudu vyadi, asingamana, aruvupana, cholla kuada, vyadi, belavina namala vendu touchpundadu, idhupilana ningal feelpanduvenga. Ananal, idhinuradhi effect enna, na, ni devanay sariyai thudikkavellai.
You may be thinking, why these sinful thoughts are coming to me, why all these uncleanness are happening to me, why I am looking at things in a wrong way, why all these vile affections and vile diseases are coming to me, but the root cause for all these things is you have not praised God. Indukkunenee laga anukunuchinam, chuchinam, thappugan anukunuchinano, apputrathne laavubachinano, indukilaga anagaman devan sariyana ritvashthutinchilakapunandavala.
Seraabengal thudippadu ungalakuthiriyon.
You know the seraphim's praising God. Seraappal devanisthutinchitam meekathileenu.
Keerabengal thudippadu ungalakuthiriyon.
You know about seraphim's praising God. Kerubul sthutinchitam meekathileenu.
Yes, I, attirukathrisna, puustagam, aramadhigaratle, avangai appudhi thudikkiranganne cholla potrakaradu.
In ICH 6, it is mentioned how they are praising God. Esya 6 adhyam var elagasthutinchilana chappabadiyunavadi.
Seraabengal appudhi thudikkirarakal.
How do the seraphim's praise God? Seraappal elagasthutinchuchinadu.
Avargal 6 settegal.
They have six wings. Varikya 6 rekhalu.
2 settegalal, avargal parakkararakal.
With two wings, they fly. 2 rekhalathai guruchinadu.
2 settegalal, padangalay moodikolukarakal.
With two feet, they cover their feet. 2 rekhalathai padamla kapukunuchinadu.
2 settegalal, mugathay moodikolukarakal.
With two wings, they cover their face. 2 rekhalathai mugamana kapukunuchinadu.
Amna enna arta?
What is the meaning of it? Ante arta mamimi?
Oruvurum seerakkuada, olliyil vasamunugaravari, tharisikeya engalakuthagudi illa.
We are not worthy to meet the person who dwells in light, which no man can approach unto. Yavarno samutnuparani, tejasalavasinchunavati, devanuchuchitakamakas, ayogiyathalaidu.
Aha, parisuthasthalathil nirkkaradukkengalakuthagudi illa.
We are not worthy to stand in the most holy place. Atiparsuthasthalam nirichitakamakas ayogiyathalaidu.
Avarid parkavod, avarude samugathil nirkavod, engalakuthagudi illan chuli da, avanga parandugidde, senegalin kathar, parisuthar, parisuthar, parisutharun chulidairga.
Seeing that they have no worthiness to see him or stand in his presence only, they keep on flying and say, holy, holy, holy is a lot of hosts. Ay, nekasanadu, nirichitakam, karabattukam, yogyulakam, anchepi, guruchu, ekova parshudithu, parshudithu, anvachepi yunnaru.
Indha varisathle yevalu kadabesirpo.
How much you would have talked this year? Is saunchamla entega maataladiyunam.
Yevalu veen vartheegal besirpo.
How much vain words you would have spoken? Entamandu vedamayn maatalapalkiyunam.
Ulliyathupati yevalu thavara besirpo.
How much wrongfully you would have spoken over the ministry? Seevanugurchiyandh thappugam maataladiyunam.
Ulliyalapati yevalu thavara besirpo.
How much wrongfully we have spoken about the servants of God? Seevkalugurchiyandh thappugam maataladiyunam.
Madeshathukku marana karuthukal yevalu besirpo.
How much of thoughts we have spoken, given about the, against the doctor? Opadeshamla kumvivetrekamana tharudamala maataladiyunam.
Viswashigalukku orudamay yevalu besirpo.
Against the believers, how much you would have spoken? Viswasa virodamaganda maataladiyunam.
Ivagallarunna sagodharasagodhirilukku orudamay yevalu besiripirigal.
Against your own brethren and sisters, how much you might have spoken? Santasagodharasagodhiriviraganda maataladiyunadu.
Yevalu oorukada besiripinga?
How much unwanted tales you would have spoken? Entooorukathal maataladiyundavachinu?
Yevalu naattinadapugal, arasiyala besiripinga?
How much you have spoken about the politics and things which are happening in the country? Entega mir desamla rajkiyumalakucham maataladiyunadu.
Ningalay yoschuparanga?
You think about it. Talanchichoodandi.
Jabanarathla enna kariyengal besininga?
What were the things you spoke during the time of prayer? Pradhana samyamla eya kariyamla maataladiyunadu.
Manigarbesu, ovavari veenana vartheekam, avan kanakukodukavendam.
For everyone that idle word that man speaks, he has to give account. Manushilapalkaradu, vedamayn maatalamachilakapakinsavaleno.
Ketta vartheegal 1, ungal vaile rindu porakavendam.
Let no corrupt communication proceed out of your mouth. Dharupashalay, enni minautrindi baildharakududu.
Keetkarakku bhaktivirithi keduvaana vartheegal irundhal, adhey besingal.
If there are words of edification to hear, speak only those words. Veetakuk sheemaavriti kalavichim maatalanamathrami palakandi.
Ungal yevalu jabanarathla ningal veenake, yevalu nara cellula besiripinga?
How much of free time you might have wasted and stopped in yourself? Pradhana samyamla vedhappachin, entega mir cellula maataladiyundavachinu?
Tamaraana conversation yevalu vanduchin, yoschuparanga?
You think how much of wrong conversation you had? Enta thappuynisambashana meekalgiyunadi?
Devan ellavachigurakaradu.
God has heard everything. Devu rammitikum vinu yunnadu.
Katarku bayandavarkal besikulvargal, avargavani thae, keetpar, artha, ellai engarukavu, nyabugavu? Puustathil edhappadukavu, adhal edhappadathle, nee thudichadu edhappadukuma, nee sabichadu edhappadukuma, nee dosichadu edhappadukuma, nee devanay mai meppaduthanadu edhappadukuma?
Indeed, fear the Lord spoke often one to another, the Lord hearkened and heard it, and a book of remembrance was written before him, the things which you were praising God, or glorifying God, blaspheming God, or praising God, what will be written there? Devanidh the Bible thilkalavu, maatalanidh vanduchinudunu, varikam maatalanidh naapukapustukamlu rayeno, nee devanisthutinchunadi, devanidh dushinchunadi, inkamigirinakariyamle koda kanapadunu.
Enne kavasinda ketupoyarche.
Now your mind has become corrupted. Meekam manushu chedipo yunnadi.
Pakkramgalallan thavara pakkara.
You look at all the people whom you see, you look them in a wrong way. Chuchinavani thappugachuchinam.
Oyamengal ketupoyarche.
Your thoughts have been corrupted. Talampulay chedipo yunnavi.
Mosamana palaviyadigal unnodu poradukaradu.
So many worse sicknesses are fighting with you. Mosamana paraviyadhalitha poraduchinavu.
Aruvupana vyadigal unnodu poradukaradu.
Abominable sicknesses are fighting with you. Keeyamana vyadhalitha poraduchinavu.
Unna arinjo, ariyamaloni, asutthathla chikkurai.
Knowing or unknowingly, you've been caught in uncleanness. Thelsetheliku, naaputrathala patbadiyunavu.
O manus kadukapadukaradu.
Your mind is being defined. Ne manushu chedupaduyunavadi?
O sarira shusi padukaradu.
Your body is being corrupted. Sarira maputramagachinadi.
Idhikalakarname enna?
What is the reason for these? Ne antitiki karname?
Devanay unni opukudukaralavula, ungal thudiyum stotthramum koranju poivatadu.
Your praising and thanksgiving have come down, that God himself might offer you to these things. Devu, neenappukinchunavatlikan, sthutthramatagi poynadi?
Ne sindhilay veenana irukkara?
You become veen in your imagination. Manushu indu verthulakamariyunavu.
Neenike kavalamana sundanegal vendukundae irukkaradu.
Words filthy thoughts are coming to your mind. Thuchumaynathalampulay vachuchinavu.
Yarapattalan thavaraana enngal?
Whoms are we? You see, you have wrong thoughts. Yavani chuchinath thappuynathalampulay.
Yarapattalan amsiigamana sindhai.
If you look at any person, you have a conal thought. Yavani chuchinath, sarirana sarumaynathalampulay.
Keedaana sindhai unnodu poradikundukaradu.
A reprobate mind is fighting with you. Brasthamansu idhappuraduchinavu.
Amsha sindhai maranam.
To be conally minded is dead. Sariramanusam maranamo.
Idhallan karname enna?
What is the cause for all these? Idhikarname?
Idhiku veer, nee thudiyamalum, stotthriyamalum irundhu.
The root for all these is you have refrained from praising and giving thanks to God. Veetikaverey, edhavani sthutinchukundam, stotthrinchukundavunandavala.
Ivaganarathalakadu, kadadiyachi, 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 time wastepanni, ippa pisasukaila unni opukudududu male, opukudududu pole, unakini kaasuttham, keedaana sindhai, elivana ichyiroham.
All the time you had, you wasted, you spoke unwanted things, you kept on talking, talking, you wasted all your time, now you've been given up to uncleanness, vile affections, and a reprobate mind. Pradhana samyamla vedhappachinavu, kathalana maataladi, ippa apputrathakthuchumayn, abilashalukka, brasthamansukka, apakichupadu yunnavu.
Ipo onelavranan?
Now what is your state? Ipu neekasthutiyadi?
Idhe nelaavathalani, adhutvarsham boona, yappudhiyurukko?
If you go in this same state to the next year, what will be? Idhisthitlavachin, sauncham vachinakal, thelaakundu.
Na oru pathinibundan time tartha.
I give you 10 minutes time. Padrimsham samyamichudunu.
Enakku oru sudhiripu, ingyavaradu, na unna parkala.
I have not seen a cleansing coming here. Neeninkal ikkavakshudhikanachoodalaidu?
Oru pathrata kaluvanasutthama irkaylan, thiripatha thirima thiriyada?
If a vessel is cleaned, we will know whether it is cleaned or not. Yellapathrunchuchinavatlikadu, shubramgaavunadu, thirithalaidu thiriyadu?
Sudhiripal, oru kaneerillada, oru sudhiripu, adhiyamathu?
A cleansing without tears is deceiving one. Kanneerulaynathu vanti shudhikaranavanchinchitaya yunnadi.
On sagodhri kallathanamay manandrimbinala, enri unmayayenrathil, manandrimbi varadullayenrdu katracholdrar.
The Lord is telling us, sister, return to him falsely but not truly. Neekasagodhri payveshamakay thiriyunadu, gani, yedharthamka thirigalaidan devu chappuchinadu.
Uduvarisathukagavo, rabo janathukagavo, ungal parisuthamakavendam, ipnekay, onkannam muddana, parlovathukuboradu kagani, parisuthapadithikavendam.
Don't sanctify yourself for the new year or for the communion service, that if you close your eyes today, that you might go to heaven.
Ne pakkada rabo janamay, ne pakkada communionan, ne pakkada prasangama?
Is this the communion that you have not seen, or the new year you have not seen, or a message that you have not heard? Neevuchudanatvadi prabharathirapochirmas, sakrathsamchramavunadu?
Ellam ungalakuthiriyon.
You know everything. Annee thileenu?
Ananal, neenikesudhiripunkaradu, kanneerill thodangattu.
Let cleansing begin with tears today. Shudhikanakanneerillaparaminachinavu.
Elargangalaimoduva?
Let's all close our eyes. Andar kalamuskanadamu.
Indha janathay enakaha neer padithinay.
These people are formed for myself. I janlanan, naakarukkay neer padichu yunnanu.
Evargal enni sulivaruvar.
They shall show forth my praise. Veernasthutini pracharamuchetukaradu.
Ne thudikkumudiyagave, indha sabikulakondorapattava?
You have been brought into this church only to praise God. Sthutinchukai sangamnakuthaibadiyunam.
Anneye naamate vaningikundrunna onnay, enndantrum devanay thudikkumudiyagae, nitthi nitthi maay, kataroode irundhu, katara mai meppaduthumudiyagae, devan uninga kunduvindhar.
To praise you God forever, to be with the Lord always, the Lord has brought you to here, you were after worshiping after strange God. Anney devatalka pochinchunana, neenaddevanke nitthi anitthiemakshothramchetuke, anni nikadu thiskunuvachinuvadu.
Ungal etanavaru unarthapadukiriga?
How many of you are being convicted? Entamandhikranchuchinadu?
En time na wastepanni ta.
I have wasted my time. Na samyamla vedhappachinuvadu.
Devan samugathena wastepanni ta.
I have wasted the presence of God. Devanisandhini vedam chesiyunam.
Enne kina keedaana sindhilay maati kundukaradu, elivana ichyirohangelasikirukaradu, asutthamana palaporadangal enakulla maranjigadakadu, idhikalakarana enna thiriyamarunna, ananal, enne kina unarukaradu, devanay thudikkalay, adhala koranchitaa.
Today I am having so many struggles of uncleanness, I have vile affections, I have reprobate mind, all these things are hidden in me, today I have found what the cause for all these things, I have not praised God. Ipu naal brasthamansutthamayn, abilashalu, apputrathalakannupadichunavu, idhantiki karana ipputthelskunuyunadu, nee devanisthutinchulaidu?
Apdipunarthapadukarankalibodi, bulangalpadiyaduva?
Those who are convicted like that, let us close our eyes and kneel down. Alagaram, puvundrivar, kalamuskanamokarichadu?
Yaravil naranjikattanunavasiyam illa, tirkathrisnanjolunavasiyallla.
There is no need to speak in unknown tongues and prophesy. Yavaru gattikakakalavesi, anyavaprabacham chappavadu?
Adhikana time kodupav, aviyana varuvaradu enakuthiriyon.
I will give time for this, foot of God will come, I know about it. Neen samyamay chudunadu, devanatma apdavachinu?
Ipu nee asutthathlirundu veliyeva?
Now you come out of uncleanness. Ipu nee apputrathundu baitikaram.
Keedaana sindhilayirundu veliyeva?
You come out of a reprobate mind. Brasthamansunandu baitikaram.
Elivana ichyirohatlirundu veliyeva?
Come out of vile affections. Thuchumayn abilashalundu baitikaram.
Adhikorae vali, neenrikim arubodiyum devanay mai meppaduthavendam, devanay thudikkavendam.
There is only one way for it, why, again you have to glorify God, you have to give thanks to God. Vakemarkam devanisthutinchavalana, devanay mai mepparchavaleno?
Ellar, ellar, konjineerav, katode samugathala, anavare, indha varisathle enakuthudikkumbediyaga kadaitan nairath, nan sariyana vidathla bayanbadutala, adhe enakum manniyamandhu vaayathirundu kadaringa?
It's all open a mouth and cry, let's every one of us cry, Lord, the time I have wasted, the time you have given me to praise you. Devanakichunavatvadi samyamasthutinchukundan, neen vedhappachinavani, northairchi, prudumam keekalaveshu devanay thadigadamu?
Neemarubodiyan devanay thudippadu unmayanal?
If it is true that you are again praising God? Marla devanisthutinchavasthamay.
Marubodi, nee devanay mai meppaduthavadu unmayanal?
If it is true that you are again glorifying God? Marla devanisthutinchavasthamay.
Ona asutthathirku opukudutha devan, unnay parisuthathirku opukudupar.
God who gave you to uncleanness will give you to holiness. Neen apputrathakapakichunadu, devu parshudathakapakichunu?
Unne keedaana sindhikku opukudavare, unnay aviyan sindhikku opukudupar.
He who gave you to reprobate mind will give you to a spiritual mind. Brasthamaynathalampulay kapakichunadu, devu atmyamansukapakichunu?
Elivana ichyirohangelukku opukudutha devan, unakusukathayum, savkathayum, arokiathayum, indha kutathil katleeduva?
He who gave you up to vile affections will come on health and healing for you this meeting. Thuchumayn abilashakapakichunadu, devu ikkutamlasvasthatino, arokiyam, neenikamalara apinchunu?
Ananal, nambikulavarkal, anavare, umay thudikkumudiyagae kudutha nairathai, nan mai meppadutamal vidduvudan, ennaman niyavandavare, enrakailanga?
Although I realize that, say, Lord, I have wasted the time you've given me to praise you, please forgive me. Sudhinchunavatvadi samyamay vedhappachinavani, sheemichandhi pravvanchepi manandramadigadu? Realize that you wasted the time God gave you in the presence of God? Devu chidrasamyam vedhappachinavani, neenam granchuchinadu?
English a valingut. Ungal etaraviradu unarukiriga?
How many if I realized it? Entamandhikranchuchinadu?
Anavare, enna tanay thudikkumudiyagae, jabi kumudiyagae, enne dhanay mai meppaduthumudiyagae, enne unarti yavi, enakutaiyata alahaha ayathupaduthidukuduthar, nanoh, adhey porakani thae.
The Lord urged me, asked me to pray, gave me beautiful time to pray, to praise him, to glorify him, but I have wasted it. Devu nakuchakakasthutinchikum, mai mepparchikuk, samyamichinavani, enna visarjinchu yunnadu?
Enne unarti nairam undu.
There were times when God convicted me. Na grahipachesina samyamunadi.
Thudikkumudiyagae, jabi kumudiyagae, mai meppaduthumudiyagae, devanay enay yedupinan nairangal undu.
There were times God made me to get up, to praise him, to glorify him, to pray. Sthutinchukum, mai mepparchikuk, devunalepina samyamulunavi?
Lanaday, obayavapaduthavillai.
But I did not make you suffer. Neenidhanay upuyoginchalaidu?
Devan enne manikavendam.
God has to forgive me. Devu enne sheemichavaleno?
En kudumbathay manikavendam.
God has to forgive my family. Na kudumbam neenakshemichavaleno?
Nan taniyagamattumala, kudumbamagae, devanay thudippadu nirthi irukkaradu, enne manikavendam?
Not only individually, as a family, I have stopped praising God, the Lord has to forgive me. Vektikathamga, kathukudumbamga, devanisthutinchramani, mesiyunandu, devunakshemichavaleno?
Devan enne maniparanaal.
If God forgives me? Devu enne sheemichunathle.
Devan enne kerekam seyvaraanaal.
If God shows mercy on me? Devu nakankram.
Idh kutathla devanadhyaya dayavoyenakukadaiyukmana?
If I have the favor of God in this meeting? Ikkutamla devanay dayanakudorkina athleite?
Asutthathlirundu, enakuvidudalaitara vendam.
He has to give me deliverance from uncleanness. Apputrathalakavitalivale?
Keedaana sindhilayirundu, enakuvidudalaitara vendam.
He has to give me deliverance from a reprobate mind. Brasthamaynathalampulay vidudalivale?
Elivana ichyirohatlirundu, enakuvidudalaitara vendam.
He has to deliver me from vile affections. Thuchumayn abilashalunavitalivale?
Oru 2 nimishay, indha pointavachin, ningal jabiinga?
For 2 minutes you keep this point in prayer. 2 nimishal, nee pamsavakarakapratan seyandi?
Anavare, naan umay thudippe?
Lord, I will praise you. Prabha, neenisthutinchadu?
Enakul jeevanulla mattum, ennu jeevanumay thudikkam.
As long as I live my life, I will praise you. Na jeevanunthavarkashthutinchadu?
En sandhadi umay thudikkam?
My seed will praise you. Na sandhathenavasthutinchunu?
Amen. Okkaro. Peri manavlu, idh kadaisi yanasu thiripukutam, okkaringa, laavu okkaringa.
Beloved, this is the last sanctification meeting. Preemalvadi, chivari shudhikanakutamo?
Idh ningal bayanbadithikavano?
Make you suffer. Neenam viro upuyoginchukandandi?
Aviyana, variyavana, namgasolro.
What of the spirit of God urged to be attending? Devanay athma prayer apinchunadu, meem chappuchinam?
Ananal, ningal idhkaappal, ungalasudhiriganu?
But beyond this, also you have to cleanse yourselves. Neenikantemirvulay shudhikranchukunavala?
Ungaleneelaavara ungalakuthiriyon.
You know your own state. Neenisthutimikathileenu?
Endh vidathle yavudhu, indha kutangalla, ningal devanodu, ungalakai korthuvadavendam?
In some way, you have to clasp your hands with God. Ellaganee ikkutamulam, devantachathil kalapavallenu?
Nan yedukkay kaneeruvada, sudhiripu, kaneerill thodangarada, gembirathala mudiyam?
Only if cleansing starts with tears, it will end in with joy. Shudhikanakanneerillaparaminachinadu, utsaadu, vandavu, ikkutamulamuginchupadunavu?
Kaneerillama, 3nalsudhiripudukka, na fasting edutha, na olanga kutathukubone, apdinsunna, adhala, nee veena vedavadu channartho?
If you say that you've taken fasting, you've gone for all the 3 days meetings without tears, it means that you've zoned your seeds even vain. Kanneetu, meelakundam, 3dhanam, shudhikanakutamukochinamante, vedhagana, vedhthamam, vedthiyonamana artham?
Maridhalitha, peedu, manangasandha alu.
Peter who denied, he wept bitterly. Yerigunani chepunapetharu santapavadiyadu?
Adhattha, enne kisabay, deva edhribar karadu, sabay.
That is what the Lord is expecting from the church today. Danunne devu sangamunidhavachuchinadu?
Aluvaana?
Will he cry?
Idh idh, odayima?
Will his heart break? Thudiyam vadhalaguna?
Manastavabaduvaana?
Will he repent? First stop paduna?
Opuravaiduvaana?
Will he get reconciled? Samadhana paduna?
Na nipukedruvaana?
Will he ask forgiveness? Shamapunaduguna?
En edhribar, ben neravettituvaana?
Will he fulfill my expectation? Na edhri chupun neravetchuna?
Adhala sudhiripulay devanay nokka?
That is the purpose of sanctification. Adheshudhikanakuthesamagavunadi?
Anal, neenam, naan chonnavaasana thamattu, vachikali vithi, ningal paerakudadu, mottilama opukudududu, vildundrunga, anadode pathathla?
Therefore, you should not cleanse yourselves, according to the verses that I tell you, you wholly offer yourself, surrender yourself, fall in the feet of the Lord. Neen chappinam maatalan, vaakimmathrami, kakundapurtikadu, devan padamliyathapadipodi?
Adh ningal sariyachayinun, na vildumbra?
I decide that you have to do it properly. Mid sariyakachavallan, korthuchinavu?
Ulliyargal, viswasiygal, pudyaviswasiygal, valivargal, vayodivargal, ellar, naligarabojanedukano, pudyavarsathapudushathodangano, apdinnambravanga, virumbavangga, vanchikaravanga, viswasiyikaravanga, sariyanasudhiripu, kattukalavendam?
Although who want to take communion in the new year in a new way, you have to receive a proper cleansing, whether you may be workers, or believers, or young, or old, or any person. Krathasamchamla, prabubala, paalupandavalsina, seevakalainna, viswaslainna, krtaviswaslainna, yavanasthalainna, peddavariinna, chinavariinna, saranthritramalakshudhikranchukunavala?
Onurajakal.
First kings. Odhiti rachal.
15 madhigaram.
Chapter 19. 15 adhyayam.
8, 15 vasana.
Verses 8 to 9. Enidhitomdivaakimlu?
Appadudha, avan erindhrindhu, pusithu, kudithu, andha bhojanathin balathinaal, naathpanal, iravum bagal, iravupagal, oripinum devanide parvada mattum nadanthupana. Angi davan urkhebikal poithangina, idoh kathrati vaththi amanukundagi, aver eliyave, inge unaki ennakariminda.
Paldinavos.
Appadu davan, nee veliyivandhu, katharukumunbaga parvathithil nellyenda.
Podo. Inge, oru vallamayana devande manushanode, devanpesukkare.
Here God is speaking to a powerful man of God.
Ikudavakashakti vandhavani, devachinathadu devadu matladuchinadu.
Oru beriyathiruktharisi.
He was a great prophet.
Kukappapravaktha.
Devande karathilarundamanushan.
He was a man who was in the hand of God.
Devaniasstamalavikti.
Devanakumunbaga nirkaran manidhanendra, avanthanay, aarimukupadutukkare.
About himself, he introduces that he is a man who stands before God.
Devanisamidhalanilichunavikti, antanukarchiparichayamchachinadu.
Onurajakal, padinale, onech.
First Kings, chapter seventeen, verse one.
Madhutirajal padihuvadavyamadhitivakyaam.
Geelyaavdin kodigalile, tispianahi eliyah, ahabbinuki, en vakiinpadiandi, indha varshangalile, paniyum, marayum payathirukumendu, isravelin devanahi, katharukumunbaga nirkranan, orude jeevanikondasalugreenenda.
Katharude, jeevanikondapesukkaramanushan choldra, naan katharukumunbaga nirkaran.
The person who is speaking by the life of God is telling, I am the person who is standing before God.
Ekhova jeevanthodinmatladuchinavikti, devansamidhalanilichunavannanachappuchinadu.
Katharukumunbaga nirkaranendra, thanay aarimukupadutukkare.
He introduces himself that he is a man standing before God.
Devaniyathuthanilichunavikti, antanukarchiparichayaparchinadu.
Alainipavankatharukumunbaga nikkele.
But now he is not standing before God.
Ipudaidhade devaniyathuthanilobadaledu.
Onurajakal, patamodhupadinundala kathar choldraare, nee veliyevandhu, enakkumunbaga nil.
Now in First Kings.
Palayamadri vandhunnil, apriyinkarare.
First Kings, chapter nineteen, verse eleven, the Lord says, you come out and stand before me as you used to do in the past.
Madhutirajal pandamdavadyam padakkundavakyaamala, paatharitika, marla naikasamidhalanilomani devachappuchinadu.
Orukalathla ningellarmay katharukumunbaga nindravargalda.
Once upon a time, you all had standing before God.
Vakanakakalamla, mirandhar devaniyathuthanilichunavare.
Adiyavamathala parkumbaludhe.
When we see in Genesis.
Adikandamalachachinappudu.
Vedamenna solukkare.
What does the scripture say?
Vakyaamemi chappuchinadu.
Abraham devanakumunbaga nindrunthundrundavurnabhar.
Abraham was a person who was standing before God.
Abramdevanithradilichunavikti.
Adiyavamapadinatti, ivati, ivandhi.
Genesis, chapter eighteen, verse twenty-two.
Adikandampatchimdavadyamirvandhiyandavakyaam.
Appadu danda purushar, avitamittu, sodhumenoki ponaargal, Abraham, pinnum katharukumunbaga nindukundanda.
Katharukumunbaga nirkaraadha, oru viswasiyinudaya alag.
Standing before the Lord is a beauty of a believer.
Devanithradilichunavika visvasika soundarimayunadu.
Adhaloru uliyakaranudaya alag.
That is the beauty of a servant of God.
Adavakasevakunikasoundarimayunadu.
Katharukumunbaga ninnada, niyarpudangalay chayvai.
Only if you stand before God, you will do wonders.
Devanithradilichunavapadabuthamalachayidu.
Even katharukumunbaga nindraboludhe.
When he stood before the Lord.
Veeriddevanithradilichunappudu.
Veerudewalkilanirandhasambavamenna.
What happened in his life?
Veerijeevathamacharinesambavamemi.
Malaya niruthinan.
He stopped the rain.
Varshamana apuvastanu.
Illavatal vaanaththay adaitaan.
Otherwise, he shut the heaven.
Akasamunamushuvastanu.
Maniyay niruthinan.
He stopped the dew.
Manchunapuvastanu.
Aduthkatharukumunbaga nindrabadinaala vaanaththithirandhan.
Next, because he stood before the Lord, he opened the heaven.
Devanithradilichunavana akasamunathiruchinu.
Katharukumunbaga nindranakal, oru vilayerepetranakal.
The days he stood before the Lord were precious days.
Devanithradilichunadu, dinamulamuliamanidu.
Adhriprakashamakkappattanakal.
There were days in which he was enlightened.
Prakashimupanna dinamulu.
Tanuday jabathle, avanakunichayamulla nakal.
Days in which he had assurance in his prayers.
Praardanlanishtayamunadu.
Aduththada avanipaduthinamparkumbaludhe.
Next, about whom we see.
Tarvathagatantukachachinappudu.
Akkiniyavana thilirundu yarakina oru manidhan.
He was a person who brought fire from heaven.
Aggrunyavakasamunidhimpiinavadu.
Avan javichaa, parlovathilirundu, pratityachamaga, devathunudaya, akkini balibadathila yarangu.
If he prays evidently, the fire of the Lord will descend from God on the altar.
Adhutpradhancheshanti, the protectionma devanikavani akasamunidhigun.
Prior life avanakirundadu.
He had such a prayer life.
Atvanti pradhanachijuthamundenu.
Tanuday jabathle, avanakurunichayam.
He had certainty in his prayers.
Praardanlanishtayavunadu.
Naanjavithaal, yen devam amen poduva.
If I pray, my God will put amen for it.
Neenupradhanchidu, devadu amen chappunu.
Andha alavu, avanakunichayamirundavurukalam.
To that extent, those for the days he had certainty.
Akalathakamishtayavunakalamu.
Naanuttiayimbaadu, pagaliintirkatharisiyakalikundrubotaan.
He killed four hundred and fifty prophets of Bane.
Naaligundra, bailapravakthalchampiyunadu.
Panjathinakalile, avaniparamarike, kathar avanay, kaahungalukkatleitaan.
In the days of famine, the Lord commanded the ravens to feed him.
Karavudinamulla pochinchadukaddevadu kaakalamulla kaagnapichinu.
Saribathila vidaviki devan katleitaan.
God commanded the widows there first.
Saripathividavral kaagnapichinu.
Arputamirandhadu.
Miracle took place.
Adbutamacharigenu.
Idella, devanakumunbaga, avan nindra kalangal.
These were times when he stood before the Lord.
Eevanu devanisamidhaladu, nilichunadu dinamulu.
Avanoruprathistola manushan.
He was a consecrated person.
Prathistakaliginavikti.
Avanodayilakuda avanakuprathistairundadu.
Even in his dress, he was consecrated.
Vashtramillaguda prathistavunadu.
Enadala, avan katharukumunbaga nindra kalangal, prathistainkalangal.
Because the days in which he stood before the Lord were days of his consecration.
Devanithradilichunadu, dinamulaprathistadu.
Avan pairayvada, avanudaya, odayda, avanuday prathisteda, avanuday adayalam.
More than his name, his ring and his dress was a sign.
Indurajakal, onniyattila, namparkumbaludhe.
When we see in First Kings, chapter one, verse eight.
Rindurajal madhitvadyam, minumidavakyaamachin.
Avan yar, apriyinaraja kakkara.
The king was asking who he was.
Adhrevaraniraja adukchinadu.
Avan pair thiriyadu, andha sevakarakal choldraanga.
The soldiers said that they did not know his name.
Pair thalidani sevakarchipuchinadu.
Avan raja kakkara, enna dress podrannamsin.
Then the king asked what dress he was putting on.
Ye vashtrama veskannanaraja.
Avan dressapathichonavadune, avan choldra, avan eliyada, enna adhuda avanuday adayalam.
When it was told about his dress, the king said it was Elijah, because that was a sign.
Vashtramachachinappudathri eliyanachappunendukanakadavak.
Arvayavam, ongeladaya, prathisteda, ongeladayadayalam.
Beloved, your consecration is your sign.
Priyamayavallanuprathistayamigutthu.
Ongeladaprathisteda, ongeladabalan.
Your consecration is your string.
Me prathistayamigbalamayunadu.
Eeljada poda orala bathingenna, avan Simpson.
If you see a person with seven locks of hair, he is Samson.
Ye udachadlagalavikthichinadu, tharsamsunu.
Singathakalichana, avan Simpson.
If he is rent, the lion, he is Samson.
Simmuavachilichinadu tharsamsunu.
Koliyathaidichana, avan oru Thavide.
If he has beaten Golayath, he is David.
Golayathachinachampinadu thidavidu.
Ipidi overukkora adayala aruke.
Like this, every person has a sign.
Eela prathivakarukkakasuchinavunadu.
Ipidi patta, oru devigamana sakthiulla, devanakumunbaga nindra manidhanthan, indha eliyayindra oru thiruktharisi.
Now this Elijah was a prophet, was a divine person, he was a prophet who stood before the Lord.
Eela devikumana shaktikalavikti, devanithradilichunavikti, eya pravak.
Ivankathar ennathcholukkare.
Now what does the Lord say?
Devademanachappuchinadu.
Orukalathil enakumunbaga nindraye.
Once upon a time, you stood before me.
Vaakalamna edhritnichinadu.
Desathayasaitthaye.
You shook the land.
Desamukkampinachachinu.
Rajakalakalangadithaye.
You troubled the kings.
Rajulakalavapachinu.
Annyavallamayalayumuriyadithaye.
You defeated the strange powers.
Annyashaktilaiapachinu.
Vaanaththay adaitaye, thirandaye, akkiniyirakinaaye.
You shut the heavens, you opened the heavens, you brought down fire.
Akasamunamushuvadu.
Adheyanubavathukavadumudiyahane, marubodi, enakkumunbaga vandhunnil.
Again, you come and stand before me, that you may come back to that experience.
Adheyanubavamakachinadu, naedhritnichinadu.
Indha varisathin kadisiyikavandrukkare, naamayum devande varthai alakiradu.
We have come to the fact, end of this year, the word of the Lord is calling us also.
Samucharantamakachinadu, devadupilichachinadu.
Marubodi, enakkumunbaga vandhunnilingalendhakathar choldukkare.
The Lord is telling, come and stand before me once again.
Marla naedhritnichinadu, devaduchappuchinadu.
Marubodi, thirappil nilingalendhakathar choldukkare.
The Lord is telling again, you stand at the breach.
Marla sandhalanilomani devaduchappuchinadu.
Marubodi, vaanaththay adakkathirakkavunakadigaran kodukumudiyahave, nee enakkumunbaga vandhunnil.
The time may give you authority once again to open the heavens and shut the heavens, come and stand before me.
Marla akasamunathiruchinadukamuitakana edhritnichinadu.
Ana enna nandhadu?
But what happened?
Charinadu emi.
Ella nalalamboitridhunche.
Everything was going all well.
Annyabagundadu.
Tidiruni, esabel dirdu oru seidi vandhade.
Suddenly, a news came from Jessabel.
Akasamuthakachiballini vattamana vachinu.
Naalagini, nichayamone kondruvanchona.
Tomorrow, surely I will kill you, she said.
Rapadithinamishtayamakachampadu.
Indha vartha, avanapattinabdiyay, tadumara vachirich.
This word immediately made him to stumble.
Ee kamatathani taladilachesinu.
Em baipadunna?
Why he should fear?
Endukkabaipadavallenu.
Vaanathalunakakniyarakanna manushan, esabelay, nee shethupovaayahave, apriyina esabelinchiduva. Shethruva.
He was a person who brought fire from heaven down, if he says Jessabel, you die, she will die.
Akasamunadhritikachesunavikti, echiballu channipamantavana.
Orukalathla vyadiodu poradinani.
Once upon a time, we are fighting with sickness.
Vaakalamla, vaanithaporadu.
Visasasayvanegalodu poradinani.
You were fighting with devil and witchcraft.
Apavadichathapadithaporadu.
Manirulodu, vallamayalodu poradinani.
You were fighting with strange powers.
Annyashaktilaporadani.
Avasiyapattal devanodu poradi, aasiduvaadangalipetthani.
If needed, you strove with God and received blessings from him.
Kaavalandhade devanta poradu, aasiruvatham pundranani.
Inneki, unakuyirbayavandricha.
Now you have fear of life.
Edhunamuna prana bayavachinu.
Oru maranabayavunakavandricha.
You have a fear of death.
Maranabayavachinadu.
Edadahayduma.
If anything will happen.
Edhana charuguna.
In these times only you have to stand before the Lord.
It was something that you didn't know.
But what happened?
What happened?
He began to run.
He began to run.
He asked the servant not to come with him and he put him away.
So, what is your state?
Where are the times in which you were illuminated for the Lord?
You were in the glory of the Lord.
What was rejoicing that you had in the beginning?
You were in the glory of the Lord.
You were in the glory of the Lord. There were times in which you were ready to pluck even your eyes and give water, where are those times?
You were in the glory of the Lord.
Now, what is your state?
You should live.
Somehow I should survive.
You should live.
The thought of dying for Jesus has left you, you have decided to live in this world.
When time changes.
No need.
No need.
It will be good if I die.
You should die.
This kind of confession came to Elijah.
You should die.
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 He came to confess to say enough lot take away my life, I am not greater than my fathers, you take away my life.
You should die.
How many of you have lost the need of standing before the Lord this year?
You should die.
Within how many of you, the fear of death is eternal?
You should die.
The paths that you went through this year, how many of you thought enough lot take away my life, if I had known this before, I would have not come enough take away my life.
You should die.
First Kings chapter nineteen verse four, he says, in a flood.
You should die.
Take away my life.
You should die.
I am not good.
You should die.
Many of us have come to that stage today.
Today, what is your state?
What is the state of a church?
What is the state of your family?
What is the state of your ministry? What is the state of your ministry?
You should die.
Now, what is the confession that is coming out of you?
You should die.
In a flood.
You should die.
It will be good if I die.
You should die.
Take me away.
You should die.
I cannot get all these kind of names.
You should die.
I cannot be put to shame like this.
You should die.
I cannot bear reproach like this.
You should die.
Don't want.
You should die.
Take me away.
You should die.
I am not able to bear.
You should die.
How many of you are coming here with this confession?
You should die.
In the midst of these kind of conflicts, he came to a place called Horip.
You should die.
Verse eight says that.
You should die.
What is it, Horip?
You should die.
That is the mount of God.
You should die.
You should die. In your spiritual life, though you may progress, when the paths that you are going through, according to the church, you are forming yourself.
You should die.
You think about your state.
You should die.
Horip.
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 That is the church of God.
You should die.
Horip.
That is the parvada. Horip is the mount of God.
You should die.
See in what state you are.
You should die.
When we see Exodus chapter three verses one and two.
You should die.
Only when Moses came to this place called Horip, the Lord appeared to him in a fiery bush and spoke to him.
You should die.
After forty years, he had the call of God, this is the place from where he got it.
You should die.
The place where the vision of God, the calling of God has been God is Horip.
You should die.
What is your calling?
You should die.
What is your election?
You should die.
Why God has called you?
You should die.
Do you remember the time when you got the calling?
You should die.
In which place did he speak to you first?
You should die.
In which day did you get the spiritual vision?
You should die.
That is Horip.
You should die.
Exodus chapter seventeen.
You should die.
When we see verses five and six.
You should die.
The place where God stood and quenched the thirst of the people was Horip.
You should die.
After coming into this church.
You should die.
The Lord spoke to you.
You should die.
You confirmed the voice of your calling.
You should die.
He gave you wishes.
You should die.
The Lord gave you revelation.
You should die.
He confirmed your call.
You should die.
There were times when God spoke to you face to face.
You should die.
If you forget all these things, you will become traitors.
You should die.
None of you have come here accidentally.
You should die.
According to the eternal purpose of God, you have been called and you have come to this place.
You should die.
After coming to this place.
You should die.
After coming to the experience of church.
You should die.
The Lord undertook the matters of your family.
You should die.
He took charge of your matters.
You should die.
He took charge of your matters of your children.
You should die.
He took the charge of your business.
You should die.
Literally, he quenched your thirst.
You should die.
Giving an anointing, he quenched your spiritual thirst.
You should die.
This is the second aspect of Horip.
You should die.
When we see Exodus chapter thirty-three verses five and six.
You should die.
Only when people came to this place called Horip, people removed their ornaments.
You should die.
After that, they did not put on their ornaments.
You should die.
After coming to this place called Horip.
You should die.
This world became as a filth to you.
You stopped beautifying yourself.
You hate decorating yourself.
You hate having the pressures of sin for a season.
World became as a dust to you.
You left it as dust.
Whether you left it or not, you also know about it.
You should die.
The time you remove your ornaments, it means you have come to the place Horip.
You should die.
If God has called you, it means you have come to Horip.
You should die.
If the Lord meets your needs, if your thirst has been quenched and if been anointed, it means you have come to Horip.
You should die.
Your turn me chapter four.
You should die.
When we see verse fifteen.
You should die.
Here God spoke.
You should die.
How many times the Lord spoke to you this year?
You should die.
When we read the word of God.
You should die.
When you heard the messages.
You should die.
Through the prophecies.
You should die.
Through the leaders.
You should die.
Through the saints.
You should die.
Secretly.
You should die.
Openly.
You should die.
Through dreams.
You should die.
Face to face.
You should die.
Apparently.
You should die.
Do you have the experience of God speaking to you?
You should die.
Now, do you have it?
You should die.
As others are talking to you, does God speak to you?
You should die.
This is Horip.
You should die.
Experience of God speaking.
You should die.
In numbers chapter twelve, when God speaks about Moses.
You should die.
My servant Moses is not so.
You should die.
If any of you is a prophet.
You should die.
I will deal with him through a dream or a wish.
You should die.
In a secret way, I will reveal to him.
You should die.
But with my servant Moses, I will not be so.
You should die.
I spoke to him mouth to mouth even apparently.
You should die.
This is Horip.
You should die.
Did the Lord speak to you in some way?
You should die.
Your turn me.
Chapter five.
Verse two.
You should die.
What is mentioned here?
You should die.
God made a covenant with his people.
You should die.
This is an important aspect of a life.
You should die.
God and man.
You should die.
Man and God.
You should die.
Being made one in consecration.
You should die.
They are making a covenant between themselves.
You should die.
Today, that is important.
You should die.
What is the covenant between you and your God today?
You should die.
What is the promise the Lord gave you?
You should die.
Has the Lord made a covenant with you? Have you made a covenant with the Lord?
You should die.
There should be consecration in your hair.
You should die.
There should be covenant in your eyes.
You should die.
There should be covenant in your mouth.
You should die.
There should be covenant in your dress.
You should die.
There should be covenant in your sleeping.
You should die.
There should be covenant in your food.
You should die.
There is such a kind of life, that is Horip.
You should die.
What does the scripture say?
You should die.
Job says, I made a covenant with my eyes.
You should die.
Daniel said, I made a covenant with food.
You should die.
David says that he had made a decision with this mouth that he will not speak wrong words.
You should die.
In Psalm hundred and thirty-two, what does David say?
You should die.
I have made a covenant with my eyes, what is the covenant, I will not sleep.
You should die.
I will not go into my bed.
You should die.
I will not give sleep to my eyes.
You should die.
These are experiences of consecration.
You should die.
In your dress, in your food, in your raiment, in your hair, in your eyes, in your speech, in everything you need a consecration, that is Horip.
You should die.
When we see Deuteronomy chapter eighteen verse sixteen.
You should die.
Horip is a place where the congregation gathers.
You should die.
You should die.
You should die.
In the place which God chooses, we have to worship him. God has brought you to this fellowship with the saints of God to worship him, to partake in the inheritance of the saints in light, this is Horip.
You should die.
According to Deuteronomy chapter twelve verses thirteen and fourteen, you should not worship God in any place.
You should die.
In the place which God chooses, we have to worship him.
You should die.
There whatever is being taught by the Lord, if you observe it, only for that, the Lord will give an ask an account.
You should die.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
You should die.
And then Elijah came to this Horip.
You should die.
Now, what happened?
You should die.
Now, the Lord is coming.
You should die.
He is coming and speaking to him.
You should die.
He came and stayed in Horip.
You should die.
Till Horip kept walking.
You should die.
After coming to Horip.
You know what happened?
You should die. There was a cave there.
You should die.
He went inside and went there.
You should die.
First Kings chapter nineteen verse eight and nine.
You should die. You should die.
You should die. Till he came to Horip, the Lord was thinking he was coming in the correct road, forgetting all his griefs and sorrows and pain, and he was coming in the right way.
You should die.
He is coming to the assembly of this church.
You should die.
He is coming to proper consecration.
You should die.
The Lord is speaking to him.
You should die.
He has removed his ornaments.
You should die.
World is seen as a dung to him.
You should die.
The Lord is answering all his prayers and squenching his thirst.
You should die.
He has a hope, the Lord has not called him to uncleanness but to holiness.
You should die.
When all these things are happening.
You should die.
Suddenly, he is taking a diversion.
You should die.
Suddenly, he was taking a diversion, there was a cave there, he went inside.
You should die.
As soon as the Lord came to know that he went here, the Lord could not remain silent in heaven.
You should die.
Immediately, he came.
You should die.
As he came, it was as if he beat with a scotch.
Elijah, what you have to do here?
You should die.
You should die.
It's true that I have asked you to come to Horip, but after coming here, why did you enter to the cave? What is the work you have inside the cave you come out?
You should die.
What is the matter for you here?
You should die.
What is the work for a believer and a worker inside the cave?
You should die.
It is good you have come to the church.
You should die.
This could have become a member of this church.
You should die.
But not standing before me, why did you enter to the cave?
You should die.
What is the work of a servant of God and a believer inside the cave?
You should die.
Come out, come again into a life of standing before me.
You should die.
Again and again, the voice of the Lord was striving with him.
You should die.
First Kings chapter nineteen verse thirteen.
You should die.
You should die.
You should die.
God was so tense, again he was asking, what do is thou here?
You should die.
In unwanted places, what is the matter?
You should die.
Why do you go to places unnecessarily?
You should die.
Why do you go to places which are not pleasing to the Lord?
You should die.
Unwontedly, why do you go to another believer's house?
You should die.
Unnecessarily, why you call through a phone and speak unwanted things?
You should die.
You should die. God was so grieved, he was thinking that he had honored him, blessed him, and he had made him as a great person, a person able to shake the whole land, now he is gone inside the cave, now that's why twice he asked, what work you have here you come out?
You should die.
There also, he was speaking.
You should die.
He had been such a great sin, now only he has become a sinner, when God was speaking so tensely, he was speaking about his godliness.
You should die.
God was in terrible sorrow.
You should die.
And the church goes away from him, he is great.
You should die.
Looking at the church, he is earned by shedding his own blood, he is great.
You should die.
What else I have to do for you?
You should die.
Why are you going and staying inside the cave?
You should die.
What is this cave show?
You should die.
First part, first part, you are not finished, you should die.
You should die.
Okay, first part, you are not finished, second part, you should die. Already first part is over, second part, you come out of the cave.
You should die.
A believer who comes properly to the sanctification meeting in the church, he only, he is a believer.
You should die.
You should die.
You should die.
Only if a person cleanses himself, the Lord can use him, he will be a vessel and to honor, meet for the master's use and prepare unto every good work, if a person is not sanctified, the Lord cannot do anything through him.
You should die.
When we see in second Samuel.
You should die.
In chapter seventeen.
You should die.
We see verse nine.
You should die.
A place where we can hide ourselves is a cave.
You should die.
He sits now in some pit or in some other place.
You should die.
You should die. There is no need for you to hide yourself in this life.
You should die.
When will a believer and a worker hide himself?
You should die.
Genesis chapter three verse ten, Adam and Eve hid themselves because they trust first the commandments and covenant statutes.
You should die.
You left it.
You should die.
When you transgress the commandments and commits sin, when you give heed to the voice of the devil, to deception of the devil, automatically, God will hide yourself in a cave.
You should die.
When we begin to stumble, we begin to hide ourselves.
You should die.
When we see Genesis chapter nineteen verse thirty.
You should die.
The Lord asked Lord to run to the mountain.
You should die.
But he said that he will not go there.
You should die.
What happened?
You should die.
He went to the city next by.
You should die.
He stayed there for two days, little gradually, he went to the cave.
You should die.
Now, what happened?
You should die.
Inside the cave, came only a powerful generation was formed.
You should die.
There was a wrong relationship.
You should die.
Everybody knows about this.
You should die.
Beloved.
You should die.
If you are inside the cave this evening, you have to come out.
You should die.
Not only lot, lot maathrami kaadu.
Even his children got got there.
You should die.
It brought a great fall.
This is not a time to hide.
You should die.
This is not the time to commit sin.
You should die.
This is not the time to be entangled in flesh.
You should die.
When we see Joshua chapter ten verses sixteen to eighteen.
You should die.
The fearful kings, the place where they hid themselves was a cave.
You should die.
Today, you are fearing sickness.
You should die.
You are fearing men.
You should die.
You are fearing devil.
You should die.
Why?
You should die.
Because you left Horip, you have this fear.
You should die.
Today, because you are going to hide yourself inside the cave.
You should die.
Kings went and hid themselves there.
You should die.
According to Revelation chapter one verse six.
You should die.
We were washed by his blood, the Lord has made us as kings.
You should die.
You have washed by the blood of Jesus, how can we go into a cave?
You should die.
How can you give room to your fear of death?
You should die.
You have to say for me to live as Christ and to die as gain.
You have to say by life or death, crying should be magnified through me.
You should die.
These are not days in which you have to remain in a cave.
You should die.
This is not the time of kings to go and hide themselves in a cave.
You should die.
Today, in which state are you?
You should die.
When we see in Judges.
You should die.
We see chapter six verse two.
You should die.
People who were forsaken.
You should die.
They sought the caves and ran there.
You should die.
The Lord gave them there.
You should die.
You should die.
Because they did wickedness, the Lord gave them up to the immediate nights, they feared the immediate nights, and they made the caves as their.
You should die.
You are forsaken state is driving you to a cave.
You should die.
When we see Psalm ten verse nine.
You should die.
Lion is inside this cave.
You should die.
Now, you yourself are going and being caught in the mouth of a lion.
You yourself is going and falling in a problem.
You should die. You yourself is going and falling in a problem.
You should die.
Daniel chapter six.
You should die.
Verse twenty-four.
You should die.
Those who accused Daniel were cast into the delirium.
You should die.
Today, you have the spirit of accusing others.
You should die.
You are accusing your parents.
You should die.
You are accusing your wife.
You should die.
You are accusing your husband.
You should die. बर्तम मिदन नेरम्मो पच्चुनारो इन्हें की वन्डे नेलवर यल्लारे नी कुट्टम चाट्ट आरंभितु विटा
Today your state is, you started to blame everyone.
अंदर मिदन नेरम्मो पच्चुनारो ओम वरुमुलुदा आण्ड अवरे कुट्टम चाट्टुकरा
When you get angry, you are blaming the Lord himself.
कोपम वच्चुना प्रित्र देव निमिदन नेरम्मो पच्चुनारो कुट्टम चाट्टुकर आवी वनकुल नी की ताले दुखी विट्टदे
Spirit of accusation has entered you now.
नेरम्मो पात्न पाईकी ताले एत्तियो नदी कड़ेसी आग
Finally
शिवरिगा Esekil मुपत्ति मुन 24 वसनते पार्कुम बुलुदे
When we see Esekil chapter thirty-three verse twenty-seven
एविच्किल मृपयु दियम वेडो वाक्यम गेबीकल इल्पोनारगल कोल्लाई नोई ताकीनदे
They went inside the cave, pestilence attacked them.
गोहलो नक वेलियो नार तेगुल ताकीयो नदी सीराद व्यादी नाल नी पिडिकपट्टुकरा
You've been caught by incurable disease.
सीरनी व्यादी तपट्टपड़ियो नारो इन्हें गुणमाक्क मार्कम
This is a way of healing.
इदि स्वस्थ पर्चु मार्ग अन्न इप्पुर तो नी यो व्यादी बलवीन तले ताकपट्टुकरा
But you are attacked by sickness and weakness.
इप्पुर इत्र व्यादी बलवीन तपट्टपड़ियो नारो
That is an experience of a cave.
गोहयो का नबोमो एलिया आवे नी एंगे इरुकरा
Elijah, where are you?
एलिया नी वेकड़े उन्नारो आण्ड अवर वंदे चोलना वनकिंग एन्ना कार्य
Elijah, the Lord came and said, "What do is thou here?"
नी विकड़े एम्चच्चुन अनु गेबीले अलाईपाय बेट्टे देवनुडे तरसनम बेट्टे देवनुडे ओढनबड़ीके बेट्टे सभायकुल वंदे नल्ला प्रदेश्य पन्नीट्रिंदन नी इप्पोल ये निंगे गेबीकुल वंदु विटा
Receiving a calling, vision, a revelation, having a covenant, you have come inside the church, now why you are inside a cave?
फिलिपुन पोंदी तरस्त्रम पोंदी नी बंदर पोंदी प्रदेश्य पोंदी नी इप्पुर गोहला एम्चच्चुनारो इन्हें की देवुडे वार्ते मेरिन बडिनाल नी ओलिया आरंभिकरा
Now because you trespass the word of the Lord, you are beginning to hide.
देव ने वाक्यम नीरन्दल ला दागन आरंभिच्चुनारो नी ओर नीतिमान ना रंदे अन्न इप्पु नी ओम बिल्लेय गेबीकुल पोई पावत्तकुले सिकी रुकरींग
You were a righteous person, but now you and your children have gone inside the cave and you are caught in sin.
नी नीतिमान तन्ना ना उन्नावका नी प्रिनी वो नी बिल्लन गोहलो नक वेलिपा पम्मल चिकुपड़ियो नारो कत्तर चोलना एन महाने मर्बड़ीम यनक कुमुन्बाहा वंदे निल
The Lord is telling him, "My son, again come and stand before me."
देव डी चप्पचुना नक कुमार डा मर्ला ना यद्धत निलो मेल्ला मुक्काड़ बोट्टे वेलिया वंदा
Slowly covering his face, he came out.
मुस्कुवेस्कन बैटिकर वच्चुनारो यपुरी मुक्काड़ बोट्टो बोड़ामलाव नी वेलिया वंदा बोदनिंग
Covering your face or not, it is sufficient if you come out today.
मुस्कुवेस्कन लेख पन्न बैटिकर वाल्ले वेलिया वंदा पिन्नु दान कत्तर वंदे पेसन
After coming out, the Lord spoke to him.
बैटिकर चिंतरवतन देव डुमाटला डेनो अभिषेक तेर्तु तिकलम्ब
Now you take your anointing and set out.
अभिषेकम दिस्कन बायल देर नी सागर द कालेक्यपट्टवन अल्ले नी अभिषेकम नम्मुड़ियाग एडुतुकलपड़ मुड़ियाग आलेक्यपट्टवन
You have not been called to die, you have been called to anoint and to be taken up.
चाउटको कादुगानी नी अभिषेकिंचिलको आरोहन मकट्टको नी अभिषेक
...
Vilayerepettaratham.
Precious blood. Amooli maniratham.
Kutthamilada rattham.
Blood without any blame. Nirdoshamayinatham.
Parishutharatham.
Holy blood. Parishutharatham.
Masillada rattham.
Blood without any fault. Anindhamayinatham.
Adhunadhey orutthuli unmail padumanaal.
If one drop of it falls on you. Adivakka chukkani midu padina kaithe.
Parishuthavanai marvai.
You'll become a holy one. Neev parishuthenigama aruduvu?
Gebiyeyavittu veliyeva.
Come out of the cave. Guganandi baidikirammu?
Yanakumunbaha vandennil.
Come and stand before me. Neev naayudithu nilumu?
Nan unne kondu oru uliyan cheyavendam.
I have to do a ministry through you. Needwaraneenakasavani cheyivalenu?
Nan varumbalugun nan unne eduttukollavendam.
When I come, I have to take you up. Neenavachinappudinithi skunavallenu?
Mulangal podu neenam podano. Puriida, Tamil puriida. Kattarunodu pesikkondrundan.
The Lord was speaking to you. Devunitha maatlaadichunna.
Devunadevaarthetukereyada.
Don't cast aside the word of the Lord. Devunivaakum visiri paaravayuvathu?
Devunadevaartheku odingipohada.
Don't go aside from the word of the Lord. Devunivaakum vadripettavathu?
Indesutigirippa, onakkakadinamayirukalam. Anaddevunadeva paarveela, avdeyirakkatin nairam.
This invitation may be hard to you, but it is a time of mercy in the sight of the Lord. Sudhi kannanikadinamavachinagandevan dhrisala kanikiram yakasamayamo?
Ni annavaruku vendam.
The Lord needs you. Neev devaniki kaavalenu?
Marvadiyoonmolu mai devan pesavendam.
Again, the Lord has to speak through you. Marlani edwaradevadmaatlaadavallenu?
Marvadiyoonne karathile eduka vendam.
Again, he has to take you in his hands. Marla chethrathithi.
Abraham, onakkunna ennaseyave?
Abraham, what will I do to you? Abraham, neenakaneemichayidunu?
Abraham, nan unne yappudi kaiyavuduve?
Abraham, how will I forsake you? Abraham, ellakasayuvadripettidunu?
Ahem. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen, amen. Indakadaisi kootathil, nammyavigalukulayirukaramo? Avigale vittinaveliyavara vendam.
This last meeting in which we were things, we are inside, we have to come out of them. Chivarkutamaludhenle unnamadhanandu baidikiravallenu?
Devan chittavatamayinamodu pesikkondrakara.
Definitely, the Lord is speaking to us. Devadvaikatamavatam maatlaadichunnaadu?
Ni devunadeva pillayaanal, indesattam onakkuriyada.
If you are a child of God, this voice belongs to you. Neev devanibittavaidi swarama neekuchendinadhi?
Ni orabugu vandadu unmayanal, indavaarthey onakkuriyada.
It is true that you've come to hear of this word belongs to you. Neev orabugu vachchindavastamaidi maata neekuchendinadhi?
Eliya, veliyavara thayangkinan.
Elijah hesitated to come out. Eliya baidikavachinakavismayam undanu?
Onakkumguada, silathavarana oravugalirukku, palakkavallakkangalirukku, silatholvigalirukku, silabayamirukku, silakelvigalirukku. Adhanale ni thayangi kondrakarae.
You also may have wrong relationships, habits and wrong things because of that you are hesitating. Neelakoni tapaina kariyamlasamasyalakannamachinavanka, baidikavachinakavijadichunna?
Eerandavudundevanavunodu pesinaa.
Second time the Lord spoke to him. Rendavusari devadmaatlaadavallenu?
Eliyave, onakkunngayenna kariyam?
What do is thou here, Elijah? Eliya neekikadhiyemi vani?
Yanakumunbaha vandennil.
Come and stand before me. Naayuditha nilumu?
Marvadiyoonunadeva adinilavarathukavandennil.
Again, come back to your first state and stand. Marlani adisitikiravallenu?
Nan unne kondu pesavendam.
I have to speak through you. Needwaranemaatlaadavallenu?
Unnodu unne kondu nan pesavendam.
By you and through you have to speak. Needwaraneenamaatlaadavallenu?
Amen. Ungal ettenavere, devan neharadiyaga, payar mattudan jolala, enneetam veliyavara cholrare? Abrinjolini nan, nambugiren jolruvanga, ungaradevaladukarathay veyartinkan.
How many of you say that you believe that God has spoken directly to you, not only simply telling your name, is spoken directly to you, raise your hands? Devunanupirichichunna, payar matramachaprenanentamadikrahinichunnaadu, chethrabaikathandi?
Devan choli vittar, unnodu nan pesivittarindru onakkutteriyam, pinneyen ni thayangukarai?
You know that God has spoken to you, it is you to you, he has spoken, but then why are you hesitating? Devuninudham maatlaaduyunnarindukunnavijadichunna?
Unayalaittavaru unmayulavare?
He was called as faithful.
Avaru unay karambadithu nadathavallavare?
He's able to hold your hand and lead you.
Va veliyae! Amen, amen. Veliyevaayangara sattathodu, kattarunadeva wallamay, ennodu poradi kondrakarindre, ettenavere cholamudiyam?
With a voice saying, "Come out, the power of God is time given me," how many of us can say that? Baidikavachinandu swarama devanathamadikporadichundanentamadikrahinichunnaadu?
Ettenaverekandavaarthey kettukondrakarindre, daiyri ma cholamudiyam?
How many of you can say, "Bali, I'm listening, hearing this word"? Entamadiki maata vinabadichunnaadhi?
Ni veliyeva?
Come out. Ni baidikirammu?
Unne vidulayakkavallavare?
He's able to deliver you.
Unne sugamakkavallavare?
He's able to heal you.
Unne nadathavallavare? Amen. Daivasaidhe, ovorupetshorulam gavunathila konduvaanga.
Kindly request your parents.
English nalavaypa. Daivasaidhe ovorupetshorulam, veliyavanga.
Please, every parent, you come out. Daichesiv talidandla baidikirandi?
Ni veliyavarradalada, onkudumbathinadi vimochanadangierukarada.
In you coming out only, there is a solution for your family.
Oh, hmm.
Ni baidikavachinabakudumbamakvimochanamunadhi?
Ovoruthaayum thakappanu veliyavaranerai idudan.
This is the time when every father and mother has to come out. Pratithalli tandri baidikavachisamayamo?
Ovoruvalibasagodarnu sagodriyum, bayappadada, daiyri ma gebiyavittu veliyeva?
Every young brother.
Devan unkarathay pidipar.
Holy come out, God, you hold your hand.
Ornimsha. Ovoru uliyakarangale veliyavaranerai idudan.
This is the time when every servant of God has to come out. Devukalabaidikavachisamayam?
Ningaveliyavandhal, ungaradevalitthadevan, marvadiyum, andesalvayay, unakkukodupar.
If you come out, the Lord has told you, will come, give again the banner.
Ettenavere viswasiikirinirka?
How many of you believe?
Va veliyae! Nan unne nadathattam. Hulavaniyara, haaniyara, haaniyara, railevanka thunai. Hulaniyara satthai. Hikaravana. Amen. Idhe kadaisi kootam?
It's the last meeting. Chivarkutammo?
Ungalai yarukavada arikeseenno, nan devanudan neringivarano, idoodan veliyavandarnuno modivaduttha? Inis ya sagaravarakam, nan gebikulapohamattan. Appidi cholruvanga elimbyari kedaala.
Those who say that they want to come close to God, I have made a decision that till I die, I will not go inside the cave, I have come out. Those who make decisions like that, you can tell. Neen devaniki samipumgaravallenuti tirumanichichunnaadu?
Short time da, takkunelimby, annavare, nan gebikulapodudu thappu?
Only a short time, Lord, it's wrong that they've gone into the cave. Neen gugalanukvelinadu thappu?
Namponadhalada, yampillanga gebikulavandutanga?
Because I went only, my children also came inside the cave. Neen velinandhavale pillalakoda vachciyunadu?
Enna manniyo?
Forgive me. Naaniksheminsamo?
Ninga koopadringa, ommanambinaveliyavara?
You're calling me.
Indakadaisi varakinadathum annavare?
You're calling me, believing you are coming out, lead me till the end, Lord. Neenunadipilichinabaidikavachinachivarkavalkunadipinsamo?
Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Revaaniyara, haavadiyara, hulavanka raadiyara. Manni mannavare, manni mannavare, sabayay manni mannavare, enjanathay manni mannavare. Amen. Edavudhu, onakkul, marindirundan.
If anything is hidden inside you. Edena nila thakivunnalaithe?
Arindho, ariyamalo, purindho, puriyamalo, jengiavudhi, edavudhu thavargalirundhalu guada, devan mannikumudiyai, oru rendanimsha mallari chapikala.
Knowing, unknown, ignorant.
Ennalalam varshatin kadaisila vandrukaro.
Without an understanding, if there is some fault, the Lord may forgive us, let us pray for two minutes because come to the last portion of the year. Thilsettelikundae edena unnalaithe devadiksheminsamadikradincha?
Thalayakkila podadinga. Inime thanama next main stepukupoporo.
Don't bow down on your head, we are going to the next step, main step. Thalalavansavathamamukkamanasthanamam?
Edavudhu kuragaldundagula, kattave namanichiruncholega?
If there is any shortcomings, say, "Lord, forgive me." Edena thappunavadiksheminsamadikadike?
Edavu, yanakutterinjo, teriyamalo, buddhirathla, edavudhu irundha, devame, naay manniyo?
Knowing, unknowingly, Lord, if there is any fault, Lord, forgive me. Thilsettelikuyedevanadikdaithesinadiksheminsamo?
Amen. Oru raja javithaan.
One king prayed. Agarajupradincheno?
Parishuthasthalathukieyetha, sutthangam, adayadurundhalum, kirubayulla devan, manni piraaga.
Even if the people have not attained the purification according to the cleansing of the temple. Gracious Lord, forgive the people.
Rendanala akamathilarek, avan chapikara. Parishuthasthalathukieyetha, sutthangam adayadu irundhalum, andesparishuthasthalathukieyetha orushuttanga, oruweela kadaayamal poirundhalo, daivay mannichanandadathigal konduvaanga?
The king prayed, the good Lord pardon everyone.
Edidinla, rendanala akamam?
30th, 19th.
Zatama?
30th, 19th.
Ah.
Esakeyavurulukkaavinnappamani, tangalpidaakalin devanayi kattharaanadevanay tedeembadiki, tangalirudetainearakkinavargal, parishuthasthalathuket.
Tangalirudetainearakkinavargal, ah.
Parishuthasthalathuketrasutthangam adayadurundhalum, kirubayulla katharaavargal, ellarkum manni paarageen.
Illai pa javamanaparavam ellaro?
Now, this is what we are all going to pray.
Ellar mulangal podu oru jomalaa?
It's all kneel down and make this prayer.
Indesutiripukuthathigavandavargal, rendanala sutiripukuthathigavandavargal, tangalirudetainearakkinavargal, yappudi ayinum paralavutukupohunnu vaanjikiravargal. Oruweelay, andes mahaparishuthadevanukumunbaha nikka mudiada badi, andes mahaparishuthasthalathirunikka koodada badi, edavudhu kuragalirundhalum, andesparishuthasthalathuketrasutthangam adayadurundhalum, kirubayulla devan, indavarshatin kadaisil, sabayay manni paaraga. Ellaruvayathirundu oru jomadinabakala? Amen, amen, amen. Ipoldhanamaadathapaguriki varugaro?
Now, you are coming to the next part.
Adienna?
What is that?
Veliyevandamanidane, kattarpesinar, neerenduvaray rajaavaga maacha abhishekikevendam, oruvarane tirkadarisiaga abhishekikevendam.
To the person who came out, the Lord spoke that he has to anoint two people as kings and one as a prophet. Idhoni rajaabhishekinchavallinavakani pravakthaka abhishekinchavallin?
Moonra abhishekatavankailakuduthu, uliyathukuduthu, po, endra anipinaa.
Giving three annoying things in ministry, he asked him to go. Moonabhishekumalunuprashavaniyichivellamani chepeno?
Kattarvenne veliyavandundutara, ettenavere viswasiikirin?
How many of you believe that the Lord has brought us out? Baidikavachinandu entamadikviswasinichunnaadu?
Innaki kattaruvankaila moonabhishekatatharabogara?
The Lord is going to give you three kinds of annoying.
Ulaga mamisampisaasay jayakkoodiya, abhishekatatharavagara?
The Lord is going to overcome the world flesh and settle.
Amen. Namattam pesara, namattam pesara. Daivasaidhe, yaravasarappatti elimby podaaringa. Ungalke veliyavandrinigana, inime kattarkaga nikkano, oruweelayakattarkagacheyano uliyanchninjana, adukorabhishekatavangiituponga. Oru kirubayepetukonduponga. Andesalva ommala vandu vildhuparakani tirimipoo. Veetukupohambo, onkaila orusalva irukadon. Orabhishegam, orakkinay, oruwallamay, oruniravana jeevan. Alavillada wallamay. Yaradakkaadiga, yaruddevunadeva wallamayakattupadadiga, yaruvekkappadadiga, devunadeva wallamaynal mudisutthapadunga. Railevanka raviyara, railevanka ravaala kathunabaka raviyara. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Manankeerasa yan bavathayella manithavittare. Manankeerasa yan bavathayella manithavittare. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Manankeerasa yan bavathayella manithavittare. Manankeerasa yan bavathayella manithavittare. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Manankeerasa yan bavathayella manithavittare. Manankeerasa.
Manankeerasa yan bavathayella manithavittare. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Manankeerasa yan bavathayella manithavittare. Manankeerasa yan bavathayella manithavittare.
Hey, la bahania ravaala thunama. Hallelujah. Pisasukuttupadutha edangudukadiga? Kattarunay manitharandri ettenaverekani cheyamirukarade? Pisasay, choluvam, unpaavam mannikapadalene, pavangalai mannikamaniyakumarneka adigaramundae. Avadevatham namudhe ellaniyayitha neekinamaisutigarithade, porajadiyaraagya baliparishuthaaviinal parishuthamakapadugare? Yesu yan bavathay manitha. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare. Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare. Manankeerastoyan bavathay, manithavittare. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare. Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare. Amen. Paavam mannikapattasintchunna, adaypolabakkiyavera ondumay kadayadu? Oru kandhidiriyala onakkukandhidirinja ipidiyukandirupana? Oru narakkamudiyaala onakkunnarakkamudiya ipidiyukandirupana? Avan ninrui elindunadandukudipan. Kattarun paavathay manithirukara. Amen, sandoshabattukaligura. Kattar marvadiyavora abhishekatavunakkutandrakara. Abhishekatthranerombay, akkiniay maare. Satthan thotuponaa. Amen. Oru, perandathilirundu oru sappani, 40vrsan sappaniyara na, avan abdi, appostolakutukuyutanga, yesuvin namathil, elindunada. Avay, nadaandu oranay, elindhan, ninrhan, nadaandhan, kudithan, odihan. Kattarunam manithu, onkaila marvadiyadhey kirubay, adhey wallamay, adhey abhishegam, adhey rettipanasalvay, ellavonkailakuduthirukumbaludhu, niyeyamavunamayirukara? Kattaray uyathu. Amen. Ipannangakara, yesu mannichara? En paavatham mannicharani cholruvanga kayvaidhiga? Apayennodu seyanduvaranga? Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Ellaro, ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare. Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare. Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade. Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare. Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare.
Ennayen aanandham, ennayen aanandham sollakoodade.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Railevanka, railevanka thunama.
Manankeerastoyan bavathayella manithavittare.
Amen. Ungalil, anegar, onga kontroliyayirkinga. Inna aviil kattundavralai, ongalopukudukamadakiriga? Onkantrolayirukada, aviyanavada kontrolavaa? Aviil kattundavana, ni erisulaimukkosiyounukum pohorono? Kattarindrikavakurabhishekantharual. Inini gebikay pohamattai? Ni bayappadamattai? Inini, ennapavathukulisikikolamattai? Indabhishekatthikondini poikondayirupai? Ekkaalam thonikkumbaludhu, ni marurubamavai? Amen. Inno, selanamadangala mudiyo, anadukumunnal, veliyevandani, orabhishekatthepetukal, oruvaarthayepetukal, oruthodudalayepetukal, oruvaakuthattathayepetukal, oruvidudalayepetukal, oruwallamayepetukal, oru kirubayepetukal, ununavarangalayepetukal. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen. Kattarukai, valghurabhisheka ettenavirkuthava? Annavare, nan umakkahajivikunupaa? Inikadakara ovorumanithuligalum, nan umakkajivikaradukaya amayavendam. Appidi pathorabhishekatthay, uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, naangal umakkahave jivikavendam. Ettenaverekandha, annavarukajivikarabhishekanthava? Hallelujah, hallelujah. Indabhisheka varumbaludhu vyadi oodam, seyvinagal parandubogo, mandaravada muriyadikapadam, sabangal ningam. Hallelujah, amen. Indabhishegam, ununayuchanthalailirundu, ulangal mattum, yelumbil, narumbil, ooonil, sadayil, retthathil, mayrin, tholil, irangattam, yesuukai jivikakudiabhishegam, hallelujah. Ipoldhanepetukal. Uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, umakkahave jivike. Umakkahave jivike. Uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, umakkahave jivike. Naangal umakkahave jivike.
Uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, umakkahave jivike. Naangal umakkahave jivike.
Railevanka raviyara, railevanka thunama.
Uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, umakkahave jivike. Naangal umakkahave jivike.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah.
Uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, umakkahave jivike.
Amen, 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 hallelujah. Niksabala, thunadiyara, bala thunadi.
Uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, umakkahave jivike. Naangal umakkahave jivike.
Amen, hallelujah.
Uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, uthidumyengal, ulathilambay, umakkahave jivike. Naangal umakkahave jivike.
Ivalari, ottharavaka thunadi.
Naangal umakkahave jivike, umakkahave jivike, naangal umakkahave jivike.
Hallelujah, hallelujah.
Kattaragya nan solukarada? Ethilayenana unnodu pesikkondrakar.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah.
Eliyavai, kevikilne veliyavandhathipole, venne veliyavandhanabhishekumpanirukre? Iyabhishekum, engalan, pran, nimayathan, tiiyabada, niyabhishekan, niyabhishekinchina? Indabhishekummanathendrindrikum unnodu irukadaanabhishekum? Iyabhishekum darara, ni samastamalajayinchadu? Indabhishekatthinalay ellavatray chayipaya? Ella? Neriyapollada avigalunku virathumay poradi kondrakarada? Adhishtamalamay ellaa, ika iyabhishekum darara samastamalajayinchid, jayviraduka, na raakaray, ni raakalas, yaralani chachitana, ni devanayavat. Indabhishekatthinalay ellapollada valamilcheethay, ennavargakagani ayitupadavaintrikartasolukara?
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Amen. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Ellar, ellar, koninarakattare thudipom? Ellar, ellar, orimitte mulusabayunkattare thudiyenge? Mulubalathode, mulumanathode? Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Avasamugam yen sandoshame, adenirayvane sandoshame. Enpatthiram nirambay. Anandampen anandame. Avasamugam yen sandoshame, avan, adenirayvane sandoshame. Enpatthiram nirambay. Anandampen anandame. Avasamugam yen sandosham. Hallelujah.
Adenirayvane sandoshame. Enpatthiram nirambay, nirambay vadiyode. Anandampen anandame.
Hallelujah. Ornimsha. Taaviidhe, oruvisay pettiyakonduvandubuludhu, andepetti aadaramithathu, orutantotha setthita, adooda taaviidhamayidhyapaita, anadutatruppe petti varumbaludhu, taaviidhenadanamadina. Yanakipidi oru bakkiyam karchircha? Indar 2019, jaya thodu mudikey, ennay parishuthathodu mudikey kattarudhivi saydare? Avasamugam yen sandoshame, adenirayvane sandoshame. Enpatthiram nirambay. Ellar, ellar. Anandampen anandame. Avasamugam yen sandosham. Hallelujah.
Adenirayvane sandoshame.
Enpatthiram nirambay. Anandampen anandame. Avasamugam yen sandoshame, adenirayvane sandoshame. Enpatthiram nirambay, nirambay vadiyode. Anandampen anandame. Avasamugam yen sandoshame, adenirayvane sandoshame. Enpatthiram nirambay.
Anandampen anandame.